We do a lot of that. And so last year, well, the way we had it, we had Clark, California, Washington, Florida. So I lived down in Clark, so the west side of the station was much smaller than our advantage. But we live right here in the morning and I told you, right to. And we think the same as children. And so, okay, so we got to the city of Nebraska, and then we had, you know, actually, two and a half years. Yeah. You get these weather. It's very important for being not raining or anything. We had, oh yeah, in fact, we were in, you know, of course, it's a place where you've got to think about what you do. I was your assistant. Absolutely.
Sam, did you tell your printer?
Oh, I have not, I haven't even been on yet, but I will. You said they'll try the bypass.
And just be sure you pick that when you're printing, or something, you know, pick the bypass check. Just put some paper in there.
Of course, you'd be funny early, then traffic is good.
Maybe take a reading of paper from here, try some different stuff.
Well, usually not too bad.
Right, yeah. And we didn't know if maybe it was the humidity or something. We didn't know what it might be. We'll try that.
But why would it be like that when it hasn't been other years?
Right, that's very true. And it's, you'll get a misfeed in like four different areas of the condo. You have to pull out four different sheets of paper.
Hold on. Go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
I thought I see like one from the primary.
Usually what I do is the first go down, because I was Wednesday, Jeremy picked soup for their items. This week, I don't know.
He's never talking about it. I know. I feel that.
I know, I know.
That's surprising. No.
He's got business, yeah.
I don't read the lab, but...
He's funny, he's, he's really, I know, he's really, in his case, that's exactly what he likes.
Yeah, everything. Yeah, that's fine.
Oh gee, we are, now we're not ready. We're setting a lot of things up here. We're going to fast. Hey. You're alive here.
No, you, one second, we'll turn on the microphone, too.
Did you not make it? They said he was going to drive himself. We talked to him.
I do, I do. This other guy here. He's on his way.
Yeah. I got the message. Yeah. I got the message.
Called it, June ninth, twenty fifteen, city council meeting to order. All council members present, with the exception of Mr. Nielsen, who is on his way. Bernie Riggs, engineer Ryan. Said some comments, anyone that wants to address the council on anything not already on the agenda? Being none? Do we have a motion to, or do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
You want that for us? I was thinking, what, July? Okay, yeah, no, I don't have any.
Do we have nothing to add? In that case, do we have a motion to drop the agenda as it is?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda? Do we have a motion to up consent agenda, or is there something that should be taken on?
I'll make that one.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Presentations, public hearings, et cetera, there are none? So we move on to engineering. Update on feasibility work for a street reconstruction project.
Thank you, Mayor. Sanitary sewer televising continues to be the longest duration of the preliminary activities that we're doing. I've got an update from the sewer televising firm, Rover, who are today. The last of the sewer mains are scheduled to be televised next week, and then we've got to finish with the televising of the house services. We'll continue to work with the city administrator and the public work staff for the notifications and the coordination of those appointments to get that work done.
There's still a large number of service lines?
Yeah, and with, you know, the frequency of how often you can schedule the appointments, it's likely to take some number of weeks yet to get all of those wrapped up. I mean, there's upwards of forty or fifty in the project area we wanted to confirm, so that we made sure that when we rebuild First Street, we know where the property is adjacent to it, how they're served. So it could take upwards of a month yet to get the, those service lines completed.
And Mr. Nielsen has arrived.
Finally.
Sorry, on power?
Yes.
Very good.
Crash.
Doesn't miss much, yeah. So we get project.
Yes, in your packet, there was information on the fire facility. There was a meeting held last week, May twenty eighth, with the project architect and the fire committee. Purpose of that meeting was to get input from the committee as to the needs for the fire station hours, so that the architect can start to lay out the square footages of the different uses and the different needs that are going to be contained within that building. The architect prepared minutes of the meeting, reviewed those, and passed them on to the city, including a new packet. Very good information was obtained from the committee. So the architect will start that now and then create two to three different options of block layouts, and then we'll have another meeting with the committee after the Fourth of July to review those and get more input and refine those for finalization. And the role will be for the city then to choose a preferred option of those layouts, and then the architect can start to work towards the renderings and the cost estimating of the facility.
Any site work yet as far as, you know, contamination and so forth?
That's the next item on your agenda.
I thought that might come first before the building.
So we have the Phase One environmental assessment.
Yes, related to the purchase of the Holdcraft site, the city has its opportunity to do its diligence to investigate the site, to make sure it's suitable for the purpose. The primary activities are, of course, the survey to create the new lot. There's the geotechnical investigation to make sure the soil is suitable, and then there's the environmental investigation to make sure there's no contaminants on the site. And in your packet is a memo on the Phase One environmental analysis. We, as your city engineer, we have staff that are certified to perform Phase One environmental analysis. And what a Phase One is, it's a non-intrusive investigation of the site. It investigates the history of the site, the current use, past uses, does those types of investigations. Also does field reconnaissance and some sampling. And the purpose, it's done in accordance with ASTM, American Society of Testing Materials Standards. And the purpose of the Phase One is really to, by the end of it, you should have a good sense of, there's a reason for us to continue with a Phase Two investigation, where you really start getting into the sampling and testing, or you have a reasonable level of comfort that there is no contaminant on site. So that's the purpose of the Phase One. The detailed scope is included in your packet. We would do the work on an hourly basis, and we're confident the work can be completed for less than a cost of five thousand dollars. And it would take approximately one month if you keep the work. So if work was authorized tonight for the Phase One environmental analysis, we'd have the written report prepared and communicated and submitted to the city by mid-July.
And hopefully before the July meeting.
That would work out well.
Seriously, knowing past history of that property, I don't think it's going to be a real easy, very little chance that there's any problem going to crop up. But due diligence requires that you check that.
Correct, yes.
So we have a motion to approve the Phase One environmental assessment.
So moved.
I'll second it then. Jumping in. On favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Also, I'll direct the staff to get going on the right way.
You can call them right now.
I might start early on the way home.
Anyway, but not while you're driving.
No, before I, before I start the truck.
Legal. Oregon's eighty-third series of apartments in the city of Kenyon to rezone and parcel a land owned by Amber Rosa. Any comments here?
This was a rezoning request to rezonate approximately two point seven acre property parcel from R one to Ag. The property meets the minimum lot size, which is two point five acres per Ag, and it is adjacent to Ag land across Second Street. So it meets all of the minimum criteria if it was, you know, just on its own, as a minimum size for an Ag, you know, size wise. And the planning commissioner recommended that the property be rezoned. You have the, I guess, everything should be contained in the resolution. I have a copy of the, or on the satellite up on the screen, if anybody's interested in the property, and you can see there's multiple buildings and...
Very nice take of an barn on what I have.
Yes.
Directly across Pearl Creek from my house. That's the progress of the painting. Do we have a motion to approve the rezoning?
I'll approve that.
And I will second that.
And says here we need a roll call vote, so start with Mr. Handy. Okay, I'll approve it.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Rezoning is done. Nielsen's property at two twenty-three is lying for that.
Chief Scholender, do you want to?
Evening, Council, the mayor. I did speak to Mr. Ramirez a couple times. The latest was an hour and a half ago. He's made significant progress in completing up his property. He said he'd be really happy to have her by tomorrow night. I said, I have no problem with that. And that's it. We really have been making a really nice effort.
It's going to be here. Hearing or any other action is needed?
No, he was out there today, and he really was moving a lot of stuff on there, so...
Yeah, I was by there this morning already, and he was at it. And like you said, an hour and a half, but yeah, I was by just about four, ten minutes ago.
Yep.
They're still at it.
They're all late, so I talked to him last night, and he's hoping to, I don't know, I don't want to say the exact time when he's going to be done, but I think he's going to get quite a bit done in the next couple of days.
Pretty good. Update on Mayor Hall's second purchase.
I can jump in. And I did have a conversation today with the attorney for Holdcraft. He is sending all the signature pages, so everything's signed on the purchase agreement. We have ordered title work, so that's in process. We should have that next day or so, because I know they were finalizing on, yesterday asking a couple of questions, which usually means that I'll have a final, and two of us probably won't say it was there this week. I don't expect to have anything that's inappropriate on that, much like the Phase One as well, since this was registered back in two thousand and four, so it should be a clean title. The thing that we need to finalize the purchase agreement is the lot split and the survey of the property. Amel, Mark and Joe have been working on that, I think. I think it's a simple, you know, where does that lot line go? But it can depend on some of the site visits and things like that, and where they configure each unit. But it's probably as simple as drawing another line and having the two descriptions. That would have to come back for the council for approval, or the monitor subdivision that we discussed before. And then we'll have a line that we need legally to put in the purchase agreement. So we're moving forward, and Holdcraft's executed, so we're in good shape.
Pretty good. So then we would move on to Amel's business. Update on county area paving.
Well, I don't really have any update. There's a copy of an email that I got from Tony, from a couple of weeks ago, and...
Close to a month ago.
Or a month ago, okay. That says that they still plan on finishing that job. I am going to contact him probably tomorrow or Thursday and try to meet with him and basically tell him that we're out of role, basically.
We gave them notice last year, and as I recall, we brought a date, was it mid-June or the end of June?
Yeah, you know, I was looking back at that. I don't recall the exact date, or if it was even July, but basically, we're at the point now where if they don't show some material progress, we're going to have to just go in there. And I did, one of the things I'm going to do is try to, you know, I don't want to say get them cornered, but I want to let them know what's going to happen if, you know, they don't do it and they don't make some efforts, try to work with us. And we've talked about some different options. If they come back and say, okay, we can't do it, we want the city to do it, there's probably some options that are cleaner that we can work out with them, whether it's going to be a, how do I put this, broadly speaking, a basically lean on property, or I, I just, Scott, I don't know, we've talked about this quite a bit.
Yeah.
I don't know about, I guess another option would be to assess all their property.
You can assess all the property, which essentially is the lean on that council, or the EDA could take lots and say, give us the lots for the city to develop, or the EDA to develop in some future time. It's a matter of how you equate and get value put on there. You know, whether the city wants to be in that business of selling lots, that's for you folks to decide, but you're going to have to get a little bit creative if we go to that point. You know, the reality is, if you assess all the lots there, are they going to be able to sell them? And that's going to be something you'll have to look at just on a cost basis there as well. But we get creative. There's a number of options, and you'll have to decide which way to go.
Regardless of whether they hired a contractor, or we hired a contractor, it's a job that has been waiting way too long, needs to get done, needs to get done this year, and if it's going to get done this year, there needs to be a contract signed with somebody real soon.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can't go another winter. I'm hearing complaints from residents out there on the condition of it, which is only deteriorating, the longer it stays in the condition that it is.
So, Joe, you're planning on coming down here next Tuesday, we talked about?
For cattle?
Yeah, howl. So maybe we could, before that, at some point, go out there and look around, because you should probably kind of do an assessment of that.
Yeah, I've been up there, it's been a few months since I've been up there, so we were going to take a fresh look.
Okay, we'll kind of figure out. I think the lot, you know, if we could get a couple lots, three, four lots, whatever, from that would be a better option than the assessments, because I think the assessments are going to be, are going to make the lots difficult to sell, because they're not going to be a few thousand, I mean, they're going to be pretty substantial. So, and I think that's going to create a bigger problem if, you know, they can't sell the lots, because they've been, you know, doing three, say, three lots a year, things have, you know, been slow, but I mean, there's houses going in there.
There is progress.
We'd hate to see that stop or be invaded, you know, stuff.
And perhaps putting it to them that way will give them impetus to get creative on the financing themselves, to get them...
Just make them know that we are going to do it this year.
Going to get done.
One way or another.
Yeah, they know we're going to do it if they don't.
Now we have the power.
They're either going to go to court, or which probably isn't likely, but I mean, we've conveyed to them that that's an option.
Yeah, and it is an option, but it's not the best, because, yeah, on both sides. You're better off to work on a deal, and if it is taking three, four lots, at least you've got value in time that's returned there that hopefully the city can accrue off for that in the future.
The better investment, what the...
Yeah, it is, it will be a benefit. I mean, that's why I put it on howl. The problem with the lots, I mean, without being too specific, is that it wasn't so much Big O that was the bank. There's a couple of different lending institutions that have leads on the lots, you know, that financed them when they originally developed, and they're reluctant to, you know, release any of that stuff, so, I don't know, we'll see what happens, but that's, you know, kind of what, because I met with Big O, brought up to them, they said that might be something they're meant to, and then I met with one of the financing, there's two of them, and they weren't too excited, but, you know, we'll see. Maybe when they realize what the cost is going to be of assessments against all the lots, maybe they'll change their mind, I don't know, if that's not going to help their position much.
No, not at all, but the new road would improve what they would retain.
Yes, it would.
And they've got to understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Actually, not a new road, but completely existing road.
Exactly. Yes, bring that up to words of state, yeah.
Okay, I love new business. Canyon Snow Drifters charitable gambling donation.
The Canyon Snow Drifters approved a thirty-five hundred dollar donation toward the cost of constructing a, an access door in materials for an outdoor patio at the municipal liquor store. Basically, it would be on the, if one was put in, it would have to be on the east side of the building, probably more toward the north. If you look at the east side over there, it'd be toward the north. And now, Melty, I don't know if you want to, you have any thing, but Melty, the manager's also here now.
I was approached by the Snow Drifters about ten days ago. They had some money they have to spend in the month of June, which I guess is a good problem to have, and they approached me about spending some of this money. We talked, and I know Diane talked before about a patio on the east side of the building. I got an estimate from Josh Lefold on the east side of the building, the farthest north window, taking that out, replacing it with a thirty-six inch door, and a handicap accessible ramp, because the ground outside is actually slightly higher, so the door would be raised up, I believe it's six inches. So then there'd be a handicap accessible ramp, which would run, you'd come inside the door, there'd be a four by four landing, and then the ramp would run further from the building, and kind of tail at the end. His estimate was twenty-nine hundred and change, and he said he estimated high, just in case he ran into anything along the way. I brought that to the Snow Drifters then. It was kind of a whirlwind of things. They approached me a couple of days before their meeting. The Snow Drifters said they would donate thirty-five hundred dollars towards the cost, towards this, and five hundred more towards the cost of any expenses toward the outside patio. I did a little bit of homework on fencing, which we would need to be up to code. It's anywhere from about, I'm assuming the metal looks a lot better and is a lot more maintenance free. That's anywhere from sixty to seventy-five dollars per six foot panel. I've talked to a couple people that are frequent customers in there, and I know I've got some people who would donate time. I personally would spend some time out there doing it. I've got a skid loader at home I can bring to town to help with a lot of this project and keep the costs down. I mean, there would need, there would be material cost for the fence, and eventually some sort of a, whether it be pavers or cement, or some sort of a ground, you know, if not this year, next year, but I think we could keep the cost minimal, and if they're willing to throw thirty-five hundred dollars into it, I mean, I think that would be the time to act on it. But then with the smoking laws, the way they are, and I mean, right now, our smoking area is standing in the back alley of the liquor store, which, you know, isn't as appealing as a lot of people's smoking area, so this would open up a smoking area and open up a nice area for those nice evenings when people come after work and just want to sit outside.
Actually, there's no reason customers can't go out and smoke in that area now. The only thing is...
They can't bring their drink, but...
Bring their drink out there.
And that's it, a lot of times the bartenders, when it's busy like that, the bartenders are policing, who's trying to bring a drink outside instead of tending to people a lot of times. There's cans that apparently get smuggled out there here and there, because I find them around the corner behind Napa sometimes.
Well, frankly, I'm not in favor of a patio there. I never have been. That piece of property gets used throughout the year for many different things, it takes away some smoke wheel parking in the winter. I'm not sure how big an area you'd be talking and covering, but since there's a time bind on this donation, both for the club and for the city, I would make a motion to accept the donation with the understanding that it will not necessarily go toward that. The way these donations work is this, they can donate to the city, but they can't specify what it's used for. They can just put in a request that they would like to see it used for this, but that's my motion, that we go ahead and accept the donation, and at a later date, we consider whether that is the way it will be used or not. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that. With the comment that, once upon a time, that whole area was set aside to be a park that was going to be called the Roots name.
It is the only green space downtown, and I hate to see it.
And seven thousand dollars was set aside for doing that, and it was going to be set aside per year until a park could be developed. Now, this was a number of years ago, so you'll have to look back in the records. I hadn't brought it up before, because it was only in discussion, and nobody's been pushing for a park. It's not that I'm necessarily pushing for a park, but you would have to check and see how binding that set aside was, and what was done with that money.
But the research projects, we're going to research to figure out how that's happened.
Okay, so anyway, I second your motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
I'm on offense. I thought I heard you.
I'll think of a...
I got some questions on it.
Yeah, I'll think of a patio, or if you look at...
I...
Sell them, that's going to be something I have to look at just on the cost basis there as well. But we get creative. There's a number of options and you'll have to decide which way to go.
Regardless of whether they hired a contractor or we hired a contractor, it's a job that has been waiting way too long, needs to get done, needs to get done this year. And if it's going to get done this year, there needs to be a contract signed with somebody real soon.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can't go another winter. I'm hearing complaints from residents up there on the condition of it, which is only deteriorating the longer it stays in the condition that it is.
So Joe, you're planning on coming down here next Tuesday? We talked about.
For cattle?
Yeah, howl. So maybe we could before that, at some point, go out there and look around because you should probably kind of do an assessment of that.
Yeah, I've been up there. It's been a few months since I've been up there, so I mean, we're going to take your first look.
Okay, we'll kind of figure out. I think the lot, you know, if we could get a couple lots, three, four lots whatever from there would be a better option than the assessments because I think the assessments are going to be, are going to make the lots difficult to sell because they're not going to be a few thousand. They're going to be pretty substantial. So, and I think that's going to create a bigger problem if they can't sell the lots because they've been, you know, doing three, say three lots a year. Things have, you know, been slow, but I mean, there's houses going in every year.
There is progress.
We'd hate to see that stop or be abandoned, you know, so.
And perhaps putting it to them that way will give them impetus to get creative on the financing themselves to get done.
Just making known that we are going to do it this year.
Going to get done.
One way or another.
What am I asking? Yeah, they know we're going to do it if they don't.
Now we have the power.
They're either going to go to court or which probably isn't likely, but I mean, we've conveyed to them that that's an option.
Yeah, and it is an option, but it's not the best because, yeah, on both sides. You're better off to work on a deal and if it is taking three, four lots, at least you've got value in time that's returned there that hopefully the city can accrue off of that in the future.
The benefit interest investment, what the.
Yeah, it is going to be a benefit. I mean, that's why I put it on howl. The problem with the lots, I mean, without being too specific, is that it wasn't so much Big O was the bank. There's a couple of different lending institutions that have leads on those lots, you know, that financed them when they originally developed. And they're reluctant to, you know, release any of that stuff, so I don't know, we'll see what happens, but that's, you know, kind of what. Because I met with Big O brought up to them, they said that might be something they were meant to, and then I met with one of the financing, there's two of them, and they weren't too excited, but, you know, we'll see. Maybe when they realize what the cost is going to be, a couple of assessments against all the lots, maybe they'll change their mind. I don't know. If that's not going to help their position much, you know, so.
No, not at all. The new road would include what they would retain.
Yes, it would.
They've got to understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Actually, not a new road, but completing the existing road.
Exactly. Just bringing it up to words.
What like they.
Okay, I love new business. Canyon Snow Drifters charitable gambling donation.
Um, the Canyon Snow Drifters approved a thirty-five-hundred-dollar donation for the cost of constructing a, an access door in materials for an outdoor patio at the municipal liquor store. Basically, it would be on the, if one was put in, it would have to be on the east side of the building, probably more toward the north. If you look at the east side over there, it'd be toward the north. And Melty, I don't know if you want to, you have any thing, but Melty, the manager's also here now.
I was approached by the Snow Drifters about ten days ago. They had some money they have to spend in the month of June, which I guess is a good problem to have. And they approached me about spending some of this money. We talked, and I know Diane talked before about a patio on the east side of the building. I got an estimate from Josh Lefald on the east side of the building, the farthest north window, taking that out, replacing it with a thirty-six-inch door. And a handicap accessible ramp because the ground outside is actually slightly higher, so the door would be raised up, I believe it's six inches. So then there'd be a handicap accessible ramp which would run, you'd come inside the door, there'd be a four-by-four landing, and then the ramp would run further from the building and kind of tail at the end. His estimate was twenty-nine hundred and change, and he said he estimated high, just in case he ran into anything along the way. I brought that to the Snow Drifters then. It was kind of a whirlwind of things. They approached me a couple of days before their meeting. The Snow Drifters said they would donate thirty-five-hundred dollars towards the cost, towards this and five hundred more towards the cost of any expenses toward the outside patio. I did a little bit of homework on fencing, which we would need to be up to code. It's anywhere from about, I'm assuming the metal looks a lot better and there's a lot more maintenance free. That's anywhere from sixty to seventy-five dollars per six-foot panel. I've talked to a couple people that are frequent customers in there, and I know I've got some people who would donate time. I personally have spent some time out there doing it. I've got a skid loader at home I can bring to town to help with a lot of this project to keep the costs down. I mean, there would need, there would be material cost for the fence and eventually some sort of a, whether it be pavers or cement or some sort of a ground, you know, if not this year, next year. But I think we could keep the cost minimal, and if they're willing to throw thirty-five-hundred dollars into it, I mean, I think that would be the time to act on it. With that, with the smoking laws the way they are, and I mean, right now, our smoking area is standing in the back alley of the liquor store, which, you know, isn't as appealing as a lot of people's smoking area. So this would open up a smoking area and open up a nice area for those nice evenings when people come after work and just want to sit outside.
Actually, there's no reason customers can't go out and smoke in that area now. The only thing.
They can't drink, they can't quit.
Bring their drink out there.
And that's it. A lot of times the bartenders, when it's busy like that, the bartenders are policing who's trying to bring the drink outside instead of attending for people a lot of times. There's cans that apparently get smuggled out there here and there because I find them, they're on the corner behind Napa sometimes.
Well, frankly, I'm not in favor of a patio there. I never have been. That piece of property gets used throughout the year for many different things. It takes away some snowmobile parking in the winter. Not sure how big an area you'd be talking and covering, but since there's a time bind on this donation, both for the club and for the city, I would make a motion to accept the donation with the understanding that it will not necessarily go toward that. The way these donations work is this, they can donate to the city, but they can't specify what it's used for. It's what they request, that they would like to see it used for this. But that's my motion that we go ahead and accept the donation and at a later date we consider whether that is the way it will be used or not. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that. With the comment that, once upon a time, that whole area was set aside to be a park that was going to be called Ruth's name.
It is the only green space downtown.
And seventy thousand dollars was set aside for doing that, and it was going to be set aside per year until a park could be developed. Now, this was a number of years ago, so you'll have to look back in the records. I haven't brought it up before because it was only in discussion, and nobody's been pushing for a park. It's not that I'm necessarily pushing for a park, but you would have to check and see how binding that set aside was and what was done with that money.
But the research project, where you're actually going to figure out.
Okay, so anyway, I second your motion.
On favor?
Aye.
How is?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm on offense. I thought I heard you.
I'll think about.
I got some questions on it.
Yeah, how big of a patio are you looking at?
I was. I was hoping for, you know, well, going out that door and going toward Main Street and probably, you know, fifty, sixty feet, which would be a little less than half of the grass area outside. And that could actually go the other way, too. If you go out that door and go to the south as well. I'm not looking at fencing that whole grass area, taking up the whole grass.
Already using part of that to.
To the top of the stress, yeah.
Do you think it's an option for the Snow Drifters to donate the money if it's not for this?
I got a feeling that they're going to.
I got a feeling they're going to, they're going to pull, they're going to pull one way.
They're going to pull her off, right? I would probably venture to say.
That's okay.
They have to donate it to somebody.
Realistically, they can't.
We've talked, we've talked about this, I did it so many years, and I just think here we got an opportunity.
But do we want it? It's going to cost more than this donation to construct a patio. And realistically, I don't believe it's going to draw in business to, more business to pay the cost.
I disagree with you.
To a small portion, a small number of people.
I have several people, just yesterday I had two guys come in and order beers. And as they ordered them, before I gave them to them, they asked, can we go outside and drink them on those picnic tables out there? And I had to tell them, no, you can't. That's, it's not within our, not within our designated area where you can have drinks.
So, so did they walk out and say, sorry?
They had, they had, they had the one beer that they'd already ordered and then they left.
But that's, that's nothing unique.
No, no, that's nothing unique, but it's more and more places, I think, are, are putting out the outdoor patios. And going forward, I know there's a road to BFW that's going to start on one either sometime this year or else, so no. And one of them, they, they bought that lot and they put a huge area in and actually lost a bet to Justin, the owner, who had to bartend there last Thursday night. My kids going to charity bartending for free, and they had a volleyball going on out there, and I bet there were a hundred people out there in their outside area, which.
Obviously, that's not going to be worth.
No, no, I, I know, but I'm just, in the spring and summer, a lot of people like to, like to sit out there and, you know, relax rather than sit inside. And as far, you know, as far as the smokers go, it gives those people a place to sit and not be in the back alley. I don't know, it's just.
That's a question that I have, is when you're mixing smokers with non-smokers, doesn't, in my opinion, mix very well.
Yeah, I guess that's another thing to look at would be maybe segregating part of it.
Well, I just like doing it in a restaurant years ago, I believe. You know, you sit on this side of the, of the facility and smoking next to you is seven o'clock, so.
Yeah.
Can't smoke inside. I still say it's all one property, let it as is, you don't smoke, or you go on the other, one or the other.
And actually, it is all one property. This is a separate part.
It is true.
Do separate persons.
What was that?
Do separate persons.
Really?
Okay. Part of it was the Rets Cafe and part of it was a implement loft. In the building that's subway now was the international.
What was the result of that vote? I honestly didn't quite get. Who did what?
One fence.
One fence, so two and two and one fence?
Did you?
I'm setting on the fence because I don't know which way to go.
So you're abstaining?
Yeah. I don't know. I'd like to, I would really like to look into this. Hopefully that the money can be there. I'm interested in seeing this happen, but I would like to personally have a little bit more information and also how much more this is going to cost the city on top of it.
Yeah, and I, I started with some, some numbers and I didn't know what size we were looking at to lay everything down. I actually had a daughter graduate last weekend and we're doing her party this weekend, so I've been, haven't had as much extra time as I would like either. Like I say, this was a thing that they brought up to me on short notice. So I can do a little more homework, too, and, you know, if we can agree on what, what size we're looking at and what area, you know, what area outside we're looking at, then I can come back with some hard numbers.
But the money has to be spent.
They have to spend the money before the end of June.
They have to physically, I mean, they have to physically donate it, convey it to the city by the end of June. That doesn't mean the money's actually got to be spent on a project.
But they have to get it out of their account.
Yeah, and the thing is, any action right now is, I mean, basically preliminary action because we don't have votes, you know, I mean, we don't have the final quotes, the final layout, the final project to approve. That doesn't mean that you favor or don't favor it, but it means that this vote, and that's what, you know, we'll have to try to convey to the Snowmobile, Snow Drifters, is that this, you know, is something that the council's going to need more information on, and we're going to have to try to get more information put together. And, I mean, that's, that goes without saying, even if the council had said, okay, we're interested in this, we want to, because at this point, we still have to collect more information on this. You know, if, if the council says, okay, we want more information, whether you support it at this point or not, and we don't have that information. So really, what they're donating to is, hasn't been decided. I mean, the final project out there, if there is one, I mean, that hasn't been decided yet. The final approval isn't there and may not be for a month or two. Because more information's got to be put together and, I mean.
So basically, we'll accept their donation for the liquor store, but not necessarily put it towards a, an outside area.
Well, the council.
Not necessarily put it towards liquor store at all.
Yeah, the council can accept it and not put any notes, for lack of a better description at this point. It is, or they can say, no, we're not interested in it. I mean, you don't have to accept the donation. Or you can say, yeah, we'll accept it, but we're not sure how it's going to be spent, how it's going to be utilized.
Which is basically my, my motion.
Yes. I'll accept, you know, I don't know what you're saying, as long as we can go with it, that it isn't locked down.
Well, it's not going to be, I mean, locked down anyway, Scott, is it?
Yeah, no, I, I, it might get raised some points about what a lawful gambling can do and contribute, how they can contribute to the city. But there are some limiting factors that they have. The reality is they can contribute to the city in any way, shape, or form. Can you attach strings? Well, there's some language in the statute that talks about if you're intending to somehow, and the exact word's escaping right now, but it's really dealing with the decision-making of the council. Well, I, I don't see that this is the intent of what's there. It's what the purpose is. The council could also accept it with that caveat that it be used for this express purpose. It doesn't mean the council has to go forward and do that project. It's not binding the council one way, shape, or form at all. Mike and I talked, and yes, it would be much better if the donation was made without any restrictions on it. That's typically how a city likes to receive it, and then it's up to you five to decide what it's used for and in what process it's used. So that's the reason Mike did the motion the way he did.
So my understanding is if we had three to two, but should I call, Tom, should I call for the vote again to?
Yeah, I think you better clarify where you really are.
Call for a rule.
Yeah.
When you have a split vote, you have to do that.
I'll go for your motion.
Aye.
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 Aye?
No.
Oh, motion passed. D Small City Development.
Um, basically, this, this information, we've discussed, the DDA had discussed starting the arduous process of working on a small city's development grant through D, through the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. Conceptually speaking, what it would be used for would be, it would be a comprehensive, which means we would try to get funding for single-family rehab, commercial rehab targeted at the downtown, and possibly rental rehab. The rehab money, as far as how that would be used, would have to be, is still to be determined. The city can structure different ways of, of utilizing the funding if it's approved on an individual basis. Whether it's used as a match or whether it's used as a zero percent loan, or there's different ways these things can be structured. But basically, it could be used for any eligible housing or commercial building, physical improvement, exterior, interior, you know, mechanicals, windows, energy, all those kind of things. This is a, generally speaking, a multi-year process. What we would most likely do this year is we would start, we're going to work with, at least initially, Southeast Minnesota Multi-County HRA. Goodview County pays levy into that, along with seven or eight other counties, and they would be willing to do the survey work. There has to be a community survey that's done to determine need. So they would do that as part of what they do for their cities and counties and come in probably later this year, maybe this fall, and start working on that whole process. We might put a pre-op in the D. It'll depend on that survey, what that shows, or we may look at putting a pre-op in in 2016. But, but I have to, you know, emphasize that this is a, this is a long, I mean, it can take two to three years to get funded. But if we use, you know, I mean, we would use, you know, like the, either SITA or the Southeast Multi-County HRA, I think more than likely one of those two, and I've talked to both of them, to do the actual application, and, you know, we would have to put, you know, I mean, a fair amount of staff time on different things, but they would actually put it together for us. There will be some fees involved. SITA told me their fee would probably be somewhere in the range of fifteen-hundred dollars. I mean, that's basically, I was surprised how low that was because if you look at the amount of money that we could get, it's a lot, you know. So I figure we're not going to lose anything by trying to do this, but this is why I think now it's kind of time to start the ball rolling in this process because maybe we're not quite ready this year, but by next year, we'll be in a stronger position. So this will probably be an ongoing thing for a while, but I just want to contemplate a little of this.
Prove hiring a Derek Mallory is lifeguard.
So, second?
On favor?
Aye.
That was quick. And the only upcoming meeting we've got on the schedule here is the next regular city council meeting on the fourteenth of July at seven PM. Council and staff general comments.
No, general, more specific comments.
I'd like to just brief the council. I'm doing my house for you, these concerns and problems. I'm moving out of town. I sold my house, so I have, till the end of this month or beginning of next month, to move, to be moved to Austin. So I'll be on the council for sure next month. I'd like to continue on my term, but when you live out of town, I don't think I can.
No.
So.
You will be here.
Yeah, next month.
Yeah, you're, you're fine as long as you're still residing, but as soon as you close down a house, then that would be the time that we have to say, you're, by law, automatic and done.
Yeah, the first century of July.
Yeah, then that.
Which means we need to start, start the process of finding our replacement.
That's what we're discussing. If we were putting on an agenda, my, my internet's been out, so I couldn't email anybody. I just figured this out last night. I got a place in Austin.
Well, sorry to, sorry to hear that, but what you have to do, that's what you have to do. So what I would, and thank you for the time and effort you put into this and the, and the park and rec, and don't be a stranger.
Oh, no. I can still be on my committees for time.
So what I would recommend at this point then is at the July meeting, that's when the council officially accepts the resignation and start like official advertising. But I would recommend if you don't have interested people to start talking about it.
Start thinking.
So they can have some time to think about it.
Thinking and questioning and assessing the interest and. And if that's the end of our council and staff comments, do we have a motion to adjourn?
If we leave. Your second.
Favor?
Aye.
Here, fine, I mean, it's all internal stuff. We put the county note on. I think the resulting will be recorded on your property.
It can be published and then it's reported, typically it is.
Yeah, so we'll have that, would it be the resolution and the conditions will be recorded. So then if you oversell or whatever, it'll still be on the record and all of that, you know, conditions.
Great.
Yep.
A llama will only be temporary.
Yeah, they can only be there for. Interesting condition. I've never seen anything quite like that.
All right, thank you.
So I guess we can run llamas somewhere. Maybe a llama llama. I like this sheep a little better, but it's going to be the llama.
There's a whole series of children's voices. Mama llama.
Oh, okay.
There used to be a golf course in Hastings where you could, they had a herd of llamas, and if you paid, no, if you paid extra, they would strap their golf bag to the llama.
It was off from my 50.
Yeah, so the llama would be your handy.
Yep. Yeah, I don't think horses still there, but they don't have the llamas.
I don't believe that. I did think I remember. Somebody had a special party there. They would not take llamas away out their hand.
The bachelor party.
And then staff at home and the last couple of days, and a couple of two nights at a time. You're a gentleman.
I'm sure some.
Thought she was just going.
Well, I think she thinks she's going to have more time. Um, we have a problem.
How do you stop this?